Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 25th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I am Jamie Lawson, Planning Director. We are short of a chair, formally chair and vice-chair tonight, so I'm starting the meeting. I will take roll call. Chair John Black is absent, Vice-Chair James Kirkpatrick also absent, Commission Member Beasley.
Here.
Commission Member Parker.
Here.
Commission Member Rome.
Here.
Commission Member Gamble.
Here.
Commission Member Hill is absent, Commission Member Wright is absent, Commission Member Zach Nelson is absent, Commission Member Rayner.
Here.
At this point, I'd like to turn it over to the Commission to appoint a chair for the evening.
I'd like to nominate Lee Rome for chair tonight.
Ballot paper? Any votes? Okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rome.
Thank you, Jamie. At this time, I would like to ask that all cell phones, electronic devices be turned off or put on silent. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. For those of you who have not been with us before, the Planning and Zoning Commission is comprised of seven members, five members of residents of the City of Burlington and are appointed by the City Council, two members are residents of the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction and are appointed by the Alamance County Commissioners. For tonight's public comments to address the commission in this meeting, please wait until called by the chair and address the commission from the podium. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes. Anyone who speaks must give their name and address for the record. I'd like to confirm that all commission members and staff members on the agenda are present, and the staff has already called the room. So... Let's go to the agenda. Item two on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on August 28th through 23rd. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number three on the agenda is the rezoning- -dash twenty-three dash oh-one-three, Mrs. Amanda- Ms. Amanda Hodier, to present a request to rezone properties from Office Institutional OI and General Business GB to General Business Limited Use GB LU. The properties are located west from the intersection of Collinwood Drive and South Church Street, on the south side of South Church Street, addressed as 3216 and 3234 South Church Street. And consisting of Alamance County tax identification numbers, 112708 and 112582.
Before she begins, do any members have any conflict of interest?
None, none for me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amanda Hodier, my offices are at 804 Green Valley Road, Suite 200 in Greensboro. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the record property owner, of course, who technically submits these applications, but also on behalf of the contract purchaser and would-be developer, that entity who has the property under contract is Geiger Cues LLC. I have with me tonight Mr. Chris Geiger, who's down here in case we need him for any operational questions. But, I mean, Lee just wanted to get the chance to see you guys and see the process. Thank you for pulling that up. So, as you've heard from staff, and I'm sure you've seen your staff report, the property we're talking about, you can go ahead and slide up to the map. Thank you, sir. Oh, the aerial, please. Perfect, thank you. The property we're talking about is 3216 and 3234 South Church Street. Despite what the address and what have you think, they're actually contiguous properties side by side here on your main stretch of the South Church Street corridor. You can see the pictorial narrative that's developing in front of you, if you will. You've got a lot of commercial intensity to the west, as you would head into Greensboro, and then to the east, you get a little bit of a break here in this part of the corridor, and then to the east, you have a great deal of commercial intensity as you start to head more into downtown. And then, of course, off the corridor, you have a lot of interior residential neighborhoods. So, a very tried and true, very traditional land use pattern that we can see here as it has developed over the years. So, if we could go to the next slide, please. This is your existing zoning, and your zoning backs up perfectly what I've just described to you and what you can see from the aerial photography. So, all that red intensity you see to the left side of your screen, that's the west as you're going to Greensboro. You will leave the site and turn left, and then all the red to the right of your screen, that's the east side as you're going into downtown. All the yellow, of course, is your interior residential neighborhoods that I mentioned. And then you'll notice along the corridor here, the main road that you see through the middle of the screen, connecting those two high-intensity activity nodes, if you will, you've got this O and I zoning, which is a nice, good... Thank you. Oh, it's too advanced, these slides. No pointer. Got it.
It should be a better.
There it is. There it is. Okay. Thank you so much. So, as we go along the corridor here, connecting these two high-intensity commercial nodes, you've got O and I all along this interior strip here, which again is the perfect transitional use as you're traveling down a main thoroughfare where you focus a lot of non-residential intensity. As you go between the high-intensity areas, what you typically do see filling in the gap, if you will, are some of the more low-intensity districts to support your more residential-supporting type of uses, your non-destination users, if you will. So, if you live up here, you might get in your car and drive to your favorite restaurant over here or downtown, but if you just want to go to your bank or do some local kind of daily needs, you want to be able to just do that sort of in the in-between without having to go to the high destination centers. I know, of course, y'all know this corridor well, but it's important for the narrative to just take a quick draw. This is coming from west to east as we travel down Church Street, coming from Greensboro or the Elon area, if you will, and traveling east towards downtown. So, you've got the big storage center, you've got a big commercial nursery. In the distance, you can see tons of pylon siloed signage for all your commercial uses. This is that area represented in red that we saw a moment ago. Bottom picture, we're now at one of those shopping centers on your left-hand side of the screen. You can see that's one that's been there for a long time, still very successful, very vibrant, thriving with a lot of successful businesses. Same on your left-hand side of the screen. Moving on down, again, we have two more shopping centers. Again, ones that have been well-established here and successful for many, many years. This is just a very well-established commercial corridor. In the distance, look at the blue sign there. That's Sherman Williams that's right next door to our site. So, you can see this is what you're immediately stepping down from as you travel the corridor. And now, we're about to our site. On the right-hand side, you have the Sherman Williams. We actually have the driveway for that establishment is on our site, and then on the left, you have a bank. So, you've got your- these are starting to step down in intensity like I talked about. So, how do we ensure that we do that with our request for general business? You saw the zoning map. We're asking to go- we've got GB next door to us. The Sherman Williams is red. We're asking to also go red, but we want to use your limited-use zoning district that you guys have in your ordinance. So, what this does is it allows us to curtail the uses, to narrow them down, and better customize the zoning district so that it matches what's needed in this space to be appropriate. This is, like I keep saying, I'm going to hellish point over and over, this is a step-down part of your corridor, so it doesn't need the full breadth of GB uses that we might have up in those shopping centers we saw. We just need a narrowly tailored use to provide the right goods and services in this part of the corridor. So, what you can see here is that we have limited the GB uses to very closely approximate the existing O and I zoning. So, the GB use list is narrowed down to just the... Am I able to scroll down, or do you need to do that? Thank you. So, these are the 32 uses that were mentioned in your staff report that remain. This is all we're looking for here, and most of these are exactly what's already allowed in O and I. And I would submit to you that these are all uses that are appropriate for this interior, you know, between the activity, between the high-intensity activity nodes of your corridor. They're very focused on neighborhood-serving type of commercial, not destination-type commercial. And here, I think, is really the crux of the case, of the request, the actual expanded use list. What would be allowed after this rezoning was approved that's not allowed today, and this is it. It's just six uses. Upper-story residential, animal grooming. I want to point out that that's different than a kennel. This is not a kennel. It's just grooming, which is a huge service that people look for these days. A convenience store with no fuel, so that really just means kind of the old general store, sundries type of store. Microbrewery or micro-distillery, because as we all know, that's sort of the go-to restaurant-type business model a lot of people are liking to do these days. Retail use other, in looking at your definitions in your ordinance, what that really means is non-big-box retail. So, if you want to have a flower shop, or a stationery shop, or a soap store, this is how you would do that, really encouraging that sort of more local, non-national, big-box type of user. And then a veterinary clinic. We added that because we felt like without the kennel aspect, it really is more of an interior medical type of use. It's very similar to what's already allowed in the O and I, and again, looking to create opportunity for people to have goods and services near their homes, near where they live, the types of things that they use on an everyday basis. So, that is the crux of the case. We did conduct some neighborhood outreach. You see the letter here that I sent out back on June 28th. We sent this to all the property owners within the notification radius that your city staff uses when they send their letters. We invited everybody to a neighborhood meeting that we held. It was on July 13th. We had it at the Trinity Worship Center, which is just the next block over from our subject property, and no one attended. I apologize for my typo there, but I'm just saying, no one attended our meeting. So, and I don't see anyone here tonight, so I hope that means that we have done a good job of curtailing this and customizing this district. We worked closely with your staff. They were a big help in sort of giving the context and understanding of where the city would like to see this corridor developed and what wants to see it developed, not overly commercial, not too intense, but to still be an opportunity to provide some goods and services to residents along the corridor, or to provide transitional-type step-down uses. I did have one phone call and two emails. People just kind of asked, hey, you know, what is this? What's going on? I talked to them about it, and they said, thank you very much, and I'll never hurt them again. So, that is what I know from the community. I'll pause there and see if there's any questions. We're happy to help answer any.
Commissioner, are there any questions?
I have some. Is a microbrewery a bar?
So, it is not, and don't let me say anything wrong definitionally, but a bar is more... Because we all kind of have an anecdotal understanding where you go in, have a cocktail, have a beer. That's really its only job. The microbrewery is more about, you actually brew onsite at a very, very small level. It's not like Rogue, Howie Gibson, or... So, at a small level, and then you might come in and buy a growler that you would take home, and they- a lot of times they'll have a small tasting room or a tasting station, you know, where you might be able to sample, but it's not really the kind of place where you're encouraged to hang out and meet your friends or have a happy hour. Did I say anything as y'all's definitions go?
Well, I mean, as part of an accessory to a distillery or a brewery, you can have a cab room, seating areas, event spaces, and sales of related merchandise. So, there is some aspect of...
So, you can sit in a bar stool and drink beer with your commissioners if you want to go there after they...
That would be ideally brewed on the site there, so microbrew is a facility that's producing the beer.
Right.
Whereas a bar or cocktail, you're generally not going to be producing onsite. The product that you're consuming isn't kind of produced on the site.
I know you might not want to answer this, but is it the intention of the developer to put a microbrewery?
It is absolutely not, no.
Then I'd take it off the list. City Council...
We can talk about that. I appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, City Council has a little trouble with this, bars and stools and drinking beer near neighborhoods. I just give that to you for your information.
I was impressed that y'all's ordinance called it out specifically. A lot of ordinances kind of tuck it up under a bar and you really have to parse it out with conditions and such, so... But I appreciate that feedback.
It might help just to have it off the list if the developer doesn't continue to use it.
Understood.
That's just my opinion. I don't know how everybody else feels, but we see some pushback occasionally from City Council on that, especially close to a neighborhood like this.
Understood, yeah. We get back to it. The site, it's kind of, so as we all know, we're on a major thoroughfare here. The curb cuts, the driveways are predetermined. You know, we've got the one already, the Sherman Williams, that we have to- we'll share that, and then there will be one additional to the east side. But, you know, for what it's worth, this isn't something where you'd have connectivity back to the neighborhood. I'll just throw that out there.
Yeah, of course, yeah. How about between sites, between parcels, or is it going to be combined to one use?
Of the two subject parcels, it'll be recombined.
To one, okay.
Developed comprehensively, yeah.
Are there any other questions?
Will it connect with Sherman Williams?
Well, we'll have a shared driveway.
Oh, shared driveway.
We'll both take access off of it. And that shared driveway exists.
Already.
Already, yeah. You can see it there, and it's actually entitled, so in other words, there's a recorded instrument that puts that there, so it is what it is, for lack of a better term.
I wonder how that happened.
Can you show us on that where the second entry?
So, that's a TRC question and subject to DOT review. You know how it is. They tell us what to do, and that's a yes, sir, no, ma'am, thank you very much. You don't really get to negotiate, but it would be... Our expectation is that they are going to want to get it as far away from this one as possible, but also not too close to this intersection, so we expect it will be somewhere around in here.
Are there any other questions from the Commission? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this matter? And what is the staff's recommendation?
The staff is recommending this rezoning. It is inconsistent with the future land use designation, which calls the area to be traditional residential and also suburban residential. That whole corridor, and I can go to the future land use designation map, so you can see... This is the future land use designation, so you can see that the future land uses designation is generally inconsistent with some of the zoning in that area. Staff does feel that the rezoning request is compatible with the commercial uses in that area. We did, I'll just say, that we did have a lot of conversation about the different uses, specifically limiting some of the GB uses that are allowed by Wright. So, we spent a lot of time reviewing that, and there's a number of uses that the applicant agreed to remove as well. With that said, we did receive a couple of calls from neighbors in the area, just with some general questions about the rezoning and traffic that might be proposed relative to any kind of development, but as you know, we don't have a end-user in sight with this rezoning request. You're just asked to consider all of the different uses that are being included as part of the limited use. So, staff recommends approval with consistency statement sheet. It's option number two, incompatible with the future land use designation.
Is there a motion from the Commission?
I'll make a motion, option number two, to approve, inconsistent with LUP, amend LUP.
Read the motion, please.
I make a motion, I make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone properties from Office Institutional OI and General Business GB to General Business Limited Use GB-LU. The properties are located west from the intersection of Collinwood Drive and South Church Street, on the south side of South Church Street, addressed as 3216 and 3234 South Church Ave.
The street, please.
The street. And consisting of Alamance County tax identification numbers, 112708 and 112582. While the request is inconsistent with the future land use map in Section 4, Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan, in that it calls for this area to have suburban, residential, and traditional residential uses, the request is compatible with the existing commercial and residential uses in the area. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the Comprehensive Plan encourages a sustainable balance of land uses. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
So, you're second?
Second.
See, standing in Chair Rome.
In favor.
Commission Member Beasley.
Favor.
Commission Member Parker.
In favor.
Commission Member Gamble.
In favor.
And Commissioner Member Rayner.
In favor.
Motion carried. Five votes in favor.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
So, we'll be correcting this item for work session as a summary, and then we'll let you know when the public hearing is going to set.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Item number four on our agenda is UVO-T, 323. Mr. Chad Meadows on behalf of the City of Burlington presenting the final ordinance text amendment.
Where's Mr. Meadows?
I am happy to say that I'll stand in for Mr. Meadows tonight.
You're going to vote him in?
He had a meeting conflict with another Planning and Zoning Commission meeting out in Clayton. It's the same process he all did a couple of years ago. They're doing one out there, so he's unavailable.
So, I will be happy to go through our presentation tonight. So, as you know, we have presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on a number of occasions. This is our 13th round of amendments, the third for this year. This is a- the UVO is a living, breathing document. It reflects oftentimes modifications that we hear from the development committee, or staff-driven modifications. So, tonight, the area of revisions is broken into six different sets. There's some procedural modifications, some dimensional standards modifications, use-related, parking-related, landscaping, and tree protection. I'm just going to summarize each one. So, the first is the procedural. We made some procedural changes dealing with fences. There was a standard in the UVO that said retaining walls need to be under the zoning permit process. We have removed that. Duplexes are exempt from site plan, the site plan process, so we have clarified that. And there was a typographic error in the bearings criteria section. Feel free to stop me at any point if you have any questions, otherwise I'm just going to kind of roll through this.
Can you bring me up to speed on the duplex exemption?
So, duplexes are considered single-family detached. Single-family detached are exempt from site plans. They still would have to go through a building permit process and a staff review, but technically, they are different than when a commercial development or a major subdivision goes through the technical review committee for a site plan process or a preliminary CLAP process. If you're coming in with an individual, single-family detached unit or duplex, would be treated the same. They are exempt from site plans, so we were just making that clear in the language.
But they have to meet on the site.
Absolutely. Yep, that does not change anything. Okay, did you do revisions to... This is just another sort of technical revision. The Office and Institutional District allows for single-family detached, and we added a footnote here to just be consistent in terms of the minimum lot size, just like the rest of the zoning districts that allow single-family detached, 9,000 square foot lot, and this is for a single-family attached as well. We've added under the limited...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
All right, so the additional 1,600... What is the additional 1,600 square feet? So, the house could be 9,000?
The minimum, it's the minimum lot size of 9,000, and if it's single-family attached, so you have multiple units connected, but on individual lots, you have to have an additional 1,600 square feet per... And this is for the track area, let's say. You're not looking at the individual lot itself. And this is consistent with HDR and other zoning districts that allow for single-family detached. We were just trying to correct an oversight. Okay, we've added hair, nail, and skin-related services as a permitted use in the light industrial zoning districts. You can see currently it is not allowed there. There are a number of places where they exist, so this is basically bringing some non-conforming uses into conformance to allow alterations, expansions, without having to not be allowed currently. All right, the next thing. We have added a standalone, an additional standalone use. You recall, last time I presented, we added the medium industrial use, where we didn't have that use previously. Tonight, we are proposing to add tobacco, CBD, and vapor shops as a standalone use. So, currently, these uses are treated as just retail uses and would be allowed in primarily your MX, your commercial zoning districts, by Wright. If there's a change of use from one retail use to another retail use, there's really no oversight. There's been some interest in these types of uses. It's brought to our attention through various means, including the Police Department, that there's a need to consider the location of these uses relative to uses that are tied to schoolage children, such as daycare facilities, different schools, parks, playgrounds. So, what we've actually done is include the use, allow it as a conditional business use as a recommendation, and provided a separation distance from... as a recommendation, and provided a separation distance from, from other adult uses, bars, lounges, private clubs, childcare, childcare centers, other uses that would, would be classified as tobacco, CBD and vapor shops. There's about, this is the, the language here on slide seven. Just trying to see if there's any other ones that I've missed. Cultural facilities, libraries, museums, religious institutions. This would, um, this would exempt it, would not apply if you're a grocery store of ten thousand square feet or more. However, if, if the business has, is selling tobacco, CBD, vape products, and the area exceeds five percent or five hundred square feet, whichever is less of the space, it would fall under the category. This would not, um, this would not change the status of some of the existing uses that exist today. They would be considered potentially non-conforming, and they would not be able to be expanded or altered. But you can see under A, the purpose, Roman et I, and III, and III three specifically related to what our intent in creating these standards would help to address. Same thing with when you're creating a new use type, you also have to create a parking requirement, so that was included as well.
Am I missing anything else?
Just the conversation we've had.
Yep.
In terms of the verdict.
Yep.
Questions?
In the, the first part, on the first page, it says a commercial establishment operates with principal use for the retail sale of tobacco, nicotine, CBD, cannabis and cannabis-related. Isn't that marijuana cannabis? When they start selling marijuana around you?
So cannabis-related plays into, there might be, staff feels that we're not talking about specific cannabis operation, we're selling cannabis in the high THC level, we're talking about products that may be closer to CBD, like cannabis. We're just kind of an all clearance kind of approach to that use, to make sure that there's not some sort of loophole, if you will, or falling between the cracks with, with calling something CBD, but it might be more of like.
What, so what does CBD mean?
Um, I don't remember what CBD stands for, but I know that CBD products have a very low percentage of THC in them. And this comes from my experience in Colorado, where we, where state law allows for marijuana uses. So this was a, just a recommendation to make sure that when you're looking at CBD or kind of, any kind of cannabis, it can be illegal. Just make sure that our definition captures any kind of attempt to sell a CBD-type product.
But it makes it sound like we're, that we have retail sales of tobacco, nicotine, cannabis and cannabis-related products, with, in addition to cigars, you know, cigarettes, tobacco and stuff, two of tobacco. Do we have to have cannabis in there? Do you have to specify this, or is this something y'all came up with, or is, do we have a problem with this?
It's, uh, I mean, if it's something where the, the nomenclature is applying that it's an allowed use, we don't want to convey that. It's a matter of making sure that a shop that might be selling this type of product could be classified in the definition for this type of use.
Right, and also if you look at, I'll go back to the language, um, sorry. There's also reference to, and by no means are we encouraging to be, the sale of something that is illegal. But there is also language, um, where is it in here, that they have to be licensed to sell any of the products required by state part of operation. So if, if you have a concern regarding that, you can certainly take a look and see if there's some additional language that we need to include that references specifically. We're not intending, this is not intending to sell any kind of illegal drug paraphernalia or illegal substance. But there may be products that contain some portion of CBD as part of, um.
Well, I'm surprised you know, know what CBD is. What does CBD mean, right?
CBD means, uh, it's canad, the doc.
Cannabis?
Can, canad, the dial. It's the second most prevalent active ingredient in cannabis. The first being THC.
And I think the other products are like, they're like CBD-adjacent.
Yeah.
So they're not necessarily, you know, marijuana like you're thinking about, they're just, they're similar to CBD, just in a different category.
CBD is an essential component of medical marijuana, it's derived directly from the plant, a cousin of marijuana.
Okay. Do we have licenses around here that, that sell that?
I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, in, in some cases, it, it's come up, um, there's health food stores that sell CBD-related products, there's pet stores that sell, I mean, it's, there's a huge market for this type of, um, product.
And it's legal here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, well, I just, I, I just found it a little unusual to put cannabis in there in our ordinance, that we're, but that's just my opinion, I don't know how anybody else feels about it. What, what do you think about?
So I, you know, I work with young people, so I'm familiar with that, just hearing what they're, what they're using, you know, so there's like Delta Eights, you know, Nines or whatever, but, uh, I'm not really sure exactly what the differences are technically, but I know that they're not marijuana-like, what, what you know, like street drugs.
Okay. Well, I don't wanna slow anything down forward, I just found it unusual to have that in our ordinance, that's all.
Question for staff on the designation section. I'm assuming that, you know, I, the first two sections, the two section of the designation, they would cover smaller establishments like the last issue and whatnot that are selling in those as well?
If they, if, if they're under a certain size, then it's considered, I guess, accessory to the other things that they're selling there. So a convenience store, if the area that they're designating at for sale is five percent or five hundred square feet, whichever is less, that would, that would be, they would not fall under these regulations. Once it gets to, above that, um, then, and you're not considered a grocery store, then they would fall under that category. Okay, I'm gonna move on unless there's any other questions. Okay, there was a change to the reference of storage and, or unlicensed or inoperable vehicles. So we've made some changes and made a reference to that particular use section. There was clarifying language dealing with accessory locations, specifically applying the way that the language is written right now, it applies to structures, and we've added and uses because we have accessory structures and accessory uses. Under the fence section, we have clarified the type and allowable, the type of allowable and prohibited materials, and also the procedures of fences that are greater than six feet. In the current UVO, you would have to provide a, um, a set of engineered drawings that is no longer, um, required under building codes, so we're just making reference to that. We have put in language dealing with gates and doors for indoor and, and above-ground swimming pools. We have added four-wheel drive off-road courses as, um, falling under the category of outdoor commercial recreation.
Who's putting one of those inside of our intensity?
You, you never know what you're gonna, what you're gonna get, and, um, you know, as, as you read the UVO, as we often have to read word for word.
We can put some on Church Street, out there on those lots.
Yeah.
That, that use category, uh, or that particular use did not fit anything. We do have race tracks, um, we have outdoor commercial recreation, but we, we did not feel that if somebody came in with a request for off-roading or an off-roading club, which we had hacked for, that it did not consider the same thing as a, as a race track with the intensification of that, it's more of a, of a commercial type of use. So we wanted to capture that. There were some changes to the, our parking standards. The first one is helping to address code enforcement, clarifying parking surface material on residential lots cannot be dirt or grass if it's between the building and the street. Currently, there's no distinction, so there was some question about that. Lowered parking requirements for bars, cocktail lounges, private clubs, micro breweries and micro distilleries. We have reduced the width of parking spaces from ten to nine feet to be, to be consistent with state law. Also reduced the ankle space width. We have removed the car wash automobile detailing from the, from having to provide bicycle parking requirements. With respect to the landscaping section, in line with the changes that we made with the duplexes and not being, um, not falling under the TRC review and not seeing the site plan, we also have exempted them from landscape requirements because you're not seeing the landscape plan. Clarified the language dealing with our, and a lot of these come from when we're looking at major site plans or commercial development. This next one deals with the landscape aisles required, um, required to occur where there's trouble or parking spaces. If there is a strip of landscaping that runs along the middle of the stalls and, um, and the rows of the landscape aisles are not required. Landscape strips, however, are required if you have two hundred plus stalls with, with more than six rows. We made some changes to, um, the additional changes to the, to the landscaping section. If there, if a property has an easement, let's say it's a utility easement or sewer easement, we do have language currently that says, with the permission of the easement holder, you can have whatever buffers within the easement. However, in some cases, you can't get permission of the easement holder, and in those situations, we have suggested a, an alternative landscape plan that we would staff would review. So that basically your, your landscaping would fall outside of the easement, but still would be required. We updated some images to better reflect what we would like to see, specifically dealing with the type B buffer. Clarified some language where a rear yard, um, abuts a street currently, you have a type C buffer that's required. In some cases, we've got some very tricky, um, some, not tricky, but some smart applicants and, and developers who try to stir around certain things. So if the rear yard is now within fifty feet of a street, we're still gonna be requiring a, a type C buffer. Clarified screening requirements for finished products for sales. We have a whole section just on screening, and we've, um, provided some clarifying language dealing with uses that are dealing specifically with selling vehicles. Tree protection, we, we have a section under tree retention that we have moved to, that we really haven't seen a lot of activity on, and so we would like to encourage that more as a sustainability incentive. So we moved those provisions to that category. And relocated the criteria for, for credit retention of existing trees from the reforestation section to the planting flexibility section. Oftentimes, um, when we get site plan applications and there's large stands of woods that exist currently, we do have planting flexibility. So an applicant has the ability to have city arborists come out, inspect the property, see whether or not the existing vegetation would qualify. So instead of taking all of that tree stand and vegetation down, that would suffice as opposed to planting something new. So we, we have that in our, in our ordinance, ordinance currently. And then relocating the tree protection device standards from, again, from the reforestation to planting flexibility, just kinda moving some things around to make more sense. We have established a new process for reforestation of vacant properties or areas of a portion of the lot that is undeveloped, where a landowner may want to reestablish vegetation. And so through an approved city reforestation plan, that an applicant would have to submit, that we would have to review and approve, a, it'll, a, there would be a, a process for reestablishing vegetation, and, um, and this would only occur if there's a vacant lot or areas where it's undeveloped. I think that covers the slides that I have for you guys tonight. In terms of the next step, this would go to city council during their work session in, um, October, and then October second, and then for scheduled for public hearing on the second scene. I think Chad will be present during those meetings. Yeah. And we'll certainly relay the concerns and comments that we've heard tonight regarding the, the cannabis-related questions and comments as well. Any other questions?
City council may not care, I mean, I, I don't know, but I, I just find it difficult that people put that in the form of, that no business can sell it, but it's illegal anyway.
I, I think, you know, I'm not an expert in, in the field, so I would say that this language, all of the text amendments have been vetted by the city attorney's office as well, as we were in close communication with the police chief regarding this, these particular standards as well.
Okay, okay.
And I think it restricts it from going near the school, I think that's a key point, isn't it?
Yeah.
You can't place a new business next to Williams High School like there's one already there, or on the way to, to school, so I think that's the, the award bar.
A thousand feet. Mm-hmm. And a thousand feet from the same type use.
We're just checking.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
One, one more time.
Any other questions, comments, okay? I appreciate you being patient and listening to me through these.
You're great. Well, you're better than Chad.
Yes, so staff is, is asking.
Any staff discussion, any, of discussion from the commission? I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Do we have a proposed motion?
There is a proposed, um, uh, staff is recommending approval of option number one in your consistency statement sheet. in the PSCC statement sheet.
I was quite about to recommend it.
It is the what, the last?
I'll make the motion with my voice as I can.
I'll read it for you.
I'm gonna read for you.
Let me check it. Mr. Beasley makes a motion to approve and I'll read it. Staff recommends the option. Option one approved, consistent with the LUP. Mr. Beasley makes the motion to recommend approval of request to amend the city rules in unified development ordinance. With proposed text amendment, the motion was based upon the consistency of proposed text amendment with the comprehensive plan in that section four land use goal one, recommendation five of the comprehensive plan calls for an update of the unified development ordinance. Section four land use goal one, recommendation five of the comprehensive plan calls for ensuring sound land planning decisions that are consistent with the vision of the plan. The section is reasonable and in the public interest in that. Section four land use goal two, recommendation four of the comprehensive plan addresses confusion, conflicts and obsolescence of the zoning code through a new unified development ordinance. Section four land use goal two, recommendation four of the comprehensive plan, a new UVO will be modern, graphic and intensive and user-friendly from both a public, district and administrative perspective. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Who moved in second? All in favor? Do I need a roll call, Ed?
Can we do a roll call, sir? Want to do a roll call, standing in chair, room?
Aye.
Commissioner member Beasley. Commissioner member Parker.
Approved.
Commissioner member Gamble. And Commissioner member Reiner.
Approved.
Motion carries with five votes in favor.
Thank you very much.
Is there any further business for this commission?
Just a quick, just a quick announcement. We have a new intern with us. So at the end of the table, just wanted to introduce Nathan Smiley. He's with us, this is his second week. And he has a master's degree in urban and regional planning. He's shadowing different staff members to get some insight on our daily businesses here. And so he was invited to attend tonight. Would like to say anything further?
Thank you for having me. I have enjoyed shadowing so far and hope to learn as much as I can while we're here.
Great, thanks, Howard.
I can say if there's no further business, the meeting is adjourned. Or I'm gonna ask for a motion. If there's a motion, it's adjourned. If there's a motion, it's adjourned.